Information can be found on the district website. The meeting is now called to order. It is June 17th, 2024, and 6:31 PM. Al, will you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our mission is to provide a safe and caring climate and culture in which we engage, inspire, educate, prepare, and empower all learners in partnership with their surrounding community to be successful in today's and tomorrow's society. Al, can you please call roll?
The following board members are present at the District Administration Office. Scott Andreasen.
Here.
Natalie Copeland.
Here.
Al Dahlgren is here. Shannon Hawes.
Here.
Monica Segura-Schwarz.
Here.
Heather Weems.
Here.
The following board members are not present, but will be a little later. Zach Dorholdt. The following cabinet members and staff are present at the District Administration Office. Superintendent Dr. Lori Putnam, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, Dr. Jason Harris, Assistant Superintendent of Pre-K through five education, Nikki Hansen, Assistant Superintendent of E-12 Education Services, Dr. Mike Rivard, Executive Director of Community Education, Adam Holm, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services, Amy Skalarud, Executive Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations, Tracy Flynn Bowe, Executive Director of Operations, Gary Ganji, Executive Director of Research, Enrollment and Assessments, Donna Roper, Director of Community Engagement and Communications, Tammy D. Land, Media Technicians, Paul Novak and Gordy Scott, and the custodian on site is Evan Voss.
Thank you. And then I'm looking for a motion to approve tonight's Board of Education meeting agenda.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Scott, a second by Monica. Al, can you call vote again?
Scott Andreasen.
Yes.
Natalie Copeland.
Yes.
Al Dahlgren is yes. Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Monica Segura-Schwarz.
Yes.
Heather Weems.
Yes.
Thank you. Then we have the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of non-controversial items that the Board adopts routinely without debate. Any single member may remove an item from the consent agenda by requesting removal at the time the consent agenda is moved for adoption. On tonight's consent agenda, Item A, approval of minutes from May 1st, 2024 and May 15th, 2024. Item B, approval of bills and other financial transactions to the grand total amount of Item C, approval personnel staff changes. Item D, acceptance of grant awards and donations. Item E, McKinley addition and renovation project change order totaling $475. And Item F, Apollo LTFM improvement change order totaling $1,577. At this time, does any board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Okay, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion by Scott, a second by Heather. Al, can you call vote again?
Scott Andreasen.
Yes.
Heather Weems.
Yes.
Monica Segura-Schwarz. Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Natalie Copeland.
Yes.
Al Dahlgren is yes.
Thank you. Okay, one informational item tonight. We have the 10-year-long Facilities Maintenance Plan presented by Amy Skalarud, Executive
Good evening, Chair Hawes, Superintendent Putnam, members of the Board. I am going to do the first half of the presentation, and then Gary is here with me to go over the projects list. So this is, let me get started here, our annual presentation. This is required to be presented and approved by the Board before the end of July and submitted to MDE. So we always bring the initial presentation as an information item in June with the project lists, and then you'll see that on Consent Agenda at the next meeting. So just a recap of what the long-term Facilities Maintenance Program is. It is a MDE program set by the legislature. Revenue comes from two sources. There's an aid component and a levy component, with the majority of it coming in the form of levy. And what we refer to as the LTFM program, Long-Term Facilities Maintenance, replaced previous legislation that you may have heard about a number of years ago that was referred to as deferred maintenance in health and safety. This new program replaced both of those and rolled them into one comprehensive program. The program is very specific and has very strict parameters about what funds can be used for. So they can be used for ADA accessibility projects that are facility-related. They can be used for health and safety expenditures in accordance with that Minnesota statute 123B.57. This statute is very specific, and so a lot of times people hear health and safety, and anything that relates to the health and/or safety of our students can come from these funds. That is unfortunately not the case. There are very narrow windows, including asbestos abatement, hazardous material, indoor air quality. There's about six allowable uses, and so it's very specific within that statute what funds can be used for. And then the majority of our funding is used for what's covered under the next bullet, which is eligible projects necessary to prevent further erosion of facilities. So that basically means replacing and upkeeping, you know, things based on normal wear and tear with some exceptions. It has to be a district-owned facility, so if a district has leasing space, you cannot use your LTFM funds to do lease improvements on someone else's property. Remodeling is not allowed, with one exception, which we'll talk about in a little bit, and then you cannot use it for new construction or to increase or add square footage. New in the, not this recent legislative session, but in the 2024, or sorry, 2023 legislative session, starting July 1st of 2024, funds can now be used for remodeling and construction to create single-user restrooms. And so you will see we have some of that in our plan, for this annual plan, as well as the bonds, the LTFM bonds that were issued for Apollo. What you see on the screen then is the proposed 2025-26 budget. So we have two components of our LTFM plan. The first, the top portion there, is the annual expenditures, so that's what we would spend within the given fiscal year, and so this is 25-26. That is set at $8,250,000. That is a slight increase from last year. Our annual amount was $8 million, but knowing that as construction costs continue to increase, we want to make sure that we're levying, between the aid and the levy, having enough in our approved plan to make sure that our facilities are being well-maintained. And then the second portion of that budget is the debt service portion. And so that is just over $5,128,000, and that covers the three bonds that over the last 10 years the district has issued for LTFM-eligible projects. So in 2015, there was a bond issued to do a large number of the district's HVAC projects. At that time, most of the schools were done under that issuance. The 2022B Facilities Bond was the bond that was issued a few years ago to do, to finish the HVAC projects. And then most recently, the 2023A Facilities Maintenance Bond is what the Board approved last year for the Apollo improvements. So that brings the total LTFM revenue to $13,378,851. And now I'll turn it over to Gary, and he can go through projects.
You mentioned that for disability, LTFM can be spent for that. On the Apollo secure entrance, could that be handled under the disability provision of LTFM?
It cannot, because that would be considered remodeling, so it has to be something like putting in a, an accessible ramp, right? Or a good example of what we view is, was the elevator at McKinley. So McKinley didn't have an elevator in their building, which, you know, doesn't meet current building code for accessibility. So it's really accessibility tied to updated building code, and a controlled entrance wouldn't fall under that umbrella.
Thank you. We're going to go through the, the projects for the 2026 LTFM. The way we come up with these projects is we have a 10-year plan, and we have all of our buildings assessed to see what the needs are, and then we work off of that list. And it will show in, in years 1 to 3, 4 to 6, and 6 to, to 9 or 10, what our needs are. Excuse me. The, each year we, we are able to pull off dollars from this, and the amounts that you see up there are, are pretty much the same as we do every year. We take $400,000 for health and safety, and then our staff that work with, with these projects along with professional services, we can code some of that to LTFM as well. And so that's what you see with those first two, two budget items. One of our bigger projects for this, and when we say this is 2026, so this will be July of '25 till June 30 of '26, so we're looking a year out. We'll be doing, one of the big projects will be a roof at North. What you're seeing there is the number, and this is true in a lot of these, that you're seeing the number, the cost estimate from July 1 to the start of school. So we'll be doing these projects in the summer, most of them, but then in this next year's LTFM budget, LTFM '25, or fiscal year '25, we, we would have some costs, but we have to buy the supplies, the materials ahead of time and do some of that work. So it's like the North roofing project would, will be more than that. It's just, these are the costs that we'll see in that year. What, what the plan is, is our buildings are used heavily through the summer school, or in the summer for programming, summer school and other things. And so what we're trying to do is concentrate our work on a few schools, because if we're going to have a disruption, let's, let's have the disruption and get the work done. So you'll see at both North and South, we're doing quite a bit of work. North will be roofing, both buildings will see restroom work. North will be getting new windows, pretty much through the whole building except the, the newest addition, excuse me, over on the south side. In the gym, the curtain will be replaced and some basketball hoops. There's, North and South were our earlier HVAC projects, and as part of the HVAC projects, some of the electrical panel boards have been replaced. Since these were early, they weren't, so we'll be going back to do that. And then you'll see at, at Apollo, we'll be finishing up that parking lot work on the south end and over on the east end, which would be over by where the DAO door used to We have a couple tennis courts that we're going to have some work in '26. That would be the Oak Hill and Kennedy. And then that will include, like we have been doing, the striping of some of the courts for pickleball, because that's, that's really a popular community activity. Then we always pull some money off for district-wide paving and concrete, HVAC repairs, unfortunately, things break, plumbing repairs, some painting. We, we, we do that every summer, and some, and flooring, and then some unallocated for those things that may break that we don't know about.
So that is what we have, and if there are any questions. Scott?
Yeah, you were talking about $8 million, and with a $250,000 increase from last year to this year, that's only about 3%, and your inflation rate, especially in construction, is running much more than that. Maybe we should consider 4% or 5%.
So what we looked at this year was looking at that 10-year plan. We just recently had the 10-year plan redone, and the 10-year plan is showing about $82 million in expenses over the 10 years. And so at $8 million a year, we're, we're a little short, but we're not, you know, needing to increase it at, at that big of a rate. And part of that has to do with the debt that the, that the district has issued the last few years to really get some of those big-ticket items, the HVAC work, roofing, and those significant improvements at Apollo. Having some of those big items come off of the 10-year plan has really put us in a point where, where we feel as of today, because that 10-year plan does have cost factors, escalation included. Now, five years from now, if the market looks different than that, we may have to revisit that, but that's part of why the, the MDE only has you approve a plan one year at a time, because you're basically setting what that dollar amount is for the next year's upcoming levy, and that gets revisited every year. So as of today, we don't want to levy more than what our 10-year plan says we'll need, but we'll certainly revisit that every year.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. But then not going anywhere here. Moving on to some action items. Amy Skalarud, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services, is presenting two more. First up is the approval of the 2023-24 revised budget.
Okay, so 23-24 revised budget. So this is just a nice summary view. A lot of this we already went over at the initial budget presentation as we, we know we focused on the 24-25, but any of those big changes in 23-24, we did review those when we went over that a couple weeks ago. So I'll just kind of quickly recap. This puts it in, in a nice summary form in terms of what the total dollar amount adjustment is for each fund. So what you see here is the revenues. Revenues for the general operations and transportation, significant increases coming off of the new money from the legislative session. When the 23-24 budget was approved, it was approved in May of that year, the session was not yet completed. So we always do that initial budget without factoring in any, any sort of increases. So we know we had a large formula increase, we had a large cross-subsidy funds from EL and Special Education, and so that's really why you see such a large increase in those, in those amounts. And then in food service, a large increase in food service, and that really has to do with the new free meals program, combined with the fact that we're a community eligibility provision district now, and so we're getting all of our meals, or the vast majority of our meals, over 95% at that higher federal rate. So that increase in revenue is a combination of higher per-meal costs as well as an increase in meals served. Community Services Fund, just a small increase there to adjust for our ABE entitlement. That's always one that comes out after the budget is done, and so we always want to adjust that to make sure that we're spending those funds, so we don't lose them. And then in the Building Construction Fund, that, a large increase in the revenues to account for the $15 million bond that was issued, as well as some interest as interest rates have gone up. Expenditures, if you put these side to side, a lot of these numbers are very comparable, and so our general operations and transportation, you'll see the expenditure amounts are almost identical to the revenue amounts, because we were obviously going to spend the new money that we have. And included in that general operations is that unique opportunity to have some of those one-time purchases, have funds available for those. Because of the timing of the funding coming from the legislative session and overlapping with our last year of COVID ESER funds, we ended up with a significant amount of, of dollars that we didn't need for general operations, and so there was those Board-approved spending plan, with the largest of that being the Apollo Theater and the McKinley Addition being the two kind of biggest pieces of that. Operating capital, you will see we have a budget adjustment on the expenditure side. There was not an adjustment on the revenue side. That is the spending, spending down of fund balance from the stadium project last summer. We hadn't put that in the original budget, because we didn't know, timing-wise, when the budget was done, if that was going to be in June of last year or in, in this fiscal year. It ended up in this fiscal year, and so you see that adjustment. And then food service, community service, again, those align with the additional revenue related to, to those programs. And then building construction is just a timing thing. We always try to estimate kind of how much of those projects are going to happen in June versus July and August, and as we were looking at where our spending to date was, it was looking like we were going to spend quite a bit more than 8.1 million, just based on the timing of the work at Apollo getting underway, and you see an adjustment for that as well. And then the last item on there that has an adjustment is the Internal Service Fund for Health Insurance. We know that our health insurance costs have been going up, and a year ago, when the rates were presented to the Board about premium increase, we had talked about how the decision of the LMC Committee was to take a slightly smaller increase in premium and spend down some of those reserves this last fiscal year. So you see that adjustment, and then you'll see a similar adjustment in '24-25, knowing that our plan year goes through October, and that, that premium crosses both of those fiscal years. So then this is just a summary, so this just recaps all of that in terms of where those fund balances were for each fund at the beginning of 2023-24, what the revised budget shows, and then where we would project those fund balances for each fund to end at the end of this year as we move into, to the audit for this year in the fall. So all the funds projecting healthy fund balances. So that is the revised budget, unless there are questions.
Any questions, Al? Okay, so we need a vote on this, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and administration is recommending the Board of Education approve the 2023-24 revised budget as Amy presented. Oh, wait, okay, yep. Go ahead, then I'll tell, say that Zach's here. Looking for a motion to approve the 23-24 revised budget?
I move.
And do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Monica, a second by Al. Zach?
Is present.
Yeah. It's mysteriously, you're going to call vote, and then I'm going to say you're here, so... Let the record show that Zach is here at 6:50 PM. Zach, can you call vote?
Scott Andreasen. Heather Weems.
Yes.
Monica Segura-Schwarz.
Yes.
Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Zach Dorholdt, yes. Al Dahlgren.
Yes.
Natalie Copeland.
Yes.
Okay, then, thank you. Moving on to the 2024-25 budget.
And so same thing, we're not going to go through all of the numbers again. We went through this in detail a few weeks ago. The, we'll just kind of quickly recap each of the funds. So General Operating Fund, where the majority of the district's activity, it takes place. Again, a balanced budget for the year, and total revenues, total expenses combined between operating transportation and capital, just under $176 million. Special revenue funds, typically our special revenue funds, we operate on a balanced budget. You'll see Food Service has a balanced budget. However, Community Education, we are bringing forward a deficit for two reasons. So to remind folks from what we went over last time, there is a levy adjustment from the School Age Care Program related to after-school care. The levy system is not the best system in terms of how quickly adjustments roll through, because we levy two years in advance of the fiscal year, and then it takes two years after the audit's done for adjustments to come through, so we're still seeing some, some COVID-related levy adjustments related to that program. And then we also have the district's share of the Rotary Preschool for Success Program that in the original budget is projected to come out of community ed fund balance, which you see based on the beginning fund balance, there are healthy reserves in that fund. That said, we are hopeful that we will get those sections approved for VPK funding. We would hope that we'll have notification of that in July, but the state did approve new additional seats as part of this legislative session, and so our, our assumption is that we have a good chance of getting some funding, in which case those costs would shift to the general fund, and this fund would be back out of a deficit, except for that levy adjustment. And then Capital Projects and Debt Service, so Capital Projects Fund is the spending down of the rest of, or the majority of that $15 million bond for Apollo, and then Debt Service Fund is just what we levy, have to pay on our principal and interest on, on all the debt that we have out there. That is a deficit, has been a deficit the last few years because of the refunding of the tech bond and the way that that overlaps. The old bond wasn't recallable yet, and so we have kind of both issuances sitting out there. One of them gets paid from the levy, and the other gets paid from the proceeds from the refunding. So until that's called in, I believe, 2027, we'll continue to see that fund look like it's, it's deficit spending, but that's really planned spending. And then the last three funds are those Internal Service Funds. Again, you'll see with the Health Insurance Fund, similar to the revised budget for last year, that we have a projected deficit to account for that planned spend down for the July through September portion of, of where those claims come in. So that is a very brief recap. Are there any questions on the 24-25 budget?
Okay, looking for a motion to approve the 24-25 budget?
So move.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Scott, a second by Monica. Zach, can you call vote?
Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Monica Segura-Schwarz.
Yes.
Heather Weems.
Yes.
Scott Andreasen.
Yes.
Natalie Copeland.
Yes.
Al Dahlgren.
Yes.
Zach Dorholdt, yes.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the summary evaluation of the superintendent presented by the Board Policy and Negotiations Committee.
Thank you. So we have a REIT report that is going to be added to the agenda for, to the agenda, not to the notes for this meeting. I'm going to read it right now. So for the Superintendent Evaluation Politic Report, this is the St. Cloud Area School Board, Board of Education continues to be very pleased with the choice of Dr. Putman as a superintendent. Each year in education comes with different, with new challenges and opportunities, and Dr. Putman consistently leads the district with a student-centered vision focus in our mission. This year, the state legislator provided what has been called historic funding towards education. Even though we did receive a funded increase, it was not enough to close the 742 Special Education and English Learners Cross-Subsided Deficit. This fiscal year alone, these deficits will, will be over $10 million and will continue to play us for future years until the State of Minnesota fully funds Special Education and EL mandates. As it came time for salary negotiations, holding both of these realities were difficult, but district and union's leadership worked together in the spirit of cooperation and respect to settle contracts sooner than many districts our size. Dr. Putman also worked prior to negotiations to restructure her cabinet, giving us the ability to redirect resources towards student contact positions. As board, we want to highlight our district's ability to efficiently work through these challenges, as well as new opportunities such as the REIT Act, Minnesota Reading to Ensure Academic Development, also mandated by the state legislator. Dr. Putman and other district leaders had already implemented many of the new legislative mandates even before REIT Act passed, letting the load our district is carrying through this statewide change. Also related to funding, we want to acknowledge the components of her cabinet for the careful work they did budgeting through COVID-era one-time funding increases. As a district, we invested strategically in a number of student-centered one-time expenditures and temporary positions with the understanding that the funding will last a few years. In regards to the school board's evaluation of Superintendent Putman, last year, we developed a three-year cycle for superintendent evaluation that pairs with our three-years superintendent contract. This year, the second in the contract, the board conducted a broad summative evaluation that, that included a survey soliciting feedback from members of the superintendent's cabinet, lead principals, the school board members, and the president of the St. Cloud Education Association, SECA. This survey was conducted by CESSO, Communications Based on Superintendent Competencies as recommended by the Minnesota School Boards Association and Minnesota Association of School Administrators to guarantee anonymity and impartiality in analysis of the results. Dr. Putman was qualified as effective and/or highly effective in all areas of this survey, proving strong forwardability and support from her team and the board. Comments about Dr. Putman from the survey included that she is highly approachably instills community confidence in our district, and she is skill in mentorship. Dr. Putman- Dr. Putnam's leadership style prioritizes influence and oversight over direct infliction of power, projecting herself as compassionate leader who actively listens yet firmly acts. Following the survey, the Board of Education met with Dr. Putnam on June 6 for a board closed session to discuss her evaluation and to set future goals. At this meeting, Dr. Putnam presented metrics on her 2324 goals accomplishments, presented her new goals for the coming year. Her goals for 2425 include the Apollo High School Facilities Bond Referendum and the continued development of our superintendents, assistant superintendents. As explained by Superintendent Putnam, these goals and objectives aim to enhance our district's district infrastructure, equity, and leadership capabilities, ensuring a positive impact on our students' success and community engagement. The school board fully supports these goals. Thank you, Dr. Putnam, for assuring us in our choice as a district 742 superintendent. We are fortunate to have you in our district. That's it. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Monica, I do have that in letter form because we have Cory, oh, perfect. Thanks. Cory Schmidt is here from the St. Cloud Times. Thanks for joining us tonight to listen and celebrate as how appreciative we are of our superintendent. So I'd like to open it up to board members to add a couple personalized words. Anybody would like to say something?
I will. I'll start.
I would just like to express my appreciation for what you do for our district and working with you. I find you very easy to work with and very capable of doing an excellent job, not only for us but for the students in the school district. And I see you step out and go above and beyond, doing things that you wouldn't have to do that are a lot of work, like today was a good example. But it really sets our district out there as a leader in the state in different areas, AI being one of them. There has, there just hasn't been much going on. There hasn't been much talk at all about AI in the district, and that summit today was a lot of work. I know it was, probably a lot of stress. And I just appreciate being able to count on you every day.
Anybody else? Natalie?
Yeah, it was fun to write this with Monica, actually, but I loved Monica's words, and I wanted to reiterate that, where she said that you project yourself as a compassionate leader who actively listens and yet firmly acts. I think that's really, shows both of your sides, that you walk in every day, and that's a very hard balancing act, and you do it really well. I'm just really proud to have my kids be able to see you as a leader of our district, and especially, I would just say especially my 14-year-old, to see, from a young woman's perspective, to see a slightly older woman leading so effectively but with that compassion yet directness. So I really appreciate you. Thank you.
I generally say Lori all the time because I feel very weird saying Dr. Putnam. Besides, I don't know how to pronounce that, to be honest. So I think that it came wrong every single time, so I apologize for that. I don't like people to butcher my name, so I really apologize for that. I shouldn't be doing it. But I really like the, I really like that we have very good role models to follow in our district, and I like that you are a role model, I like the caring and the care that you have for, with an eye on the future. So looking at the summit today, for example, which I am very interested to know all what happened that I couldn't come, I'm very, well, that's a different topic, sorry. So looking, for example, to that, looking for the way that you have mentored your staff, and we have one that is leaving now because you've mentored him so well. So you two cannot leave right now. You still need much work. I like that this district is a very special district, and it requires the human power that we have here, and I think that you know that, and you've been working on that towards that, and it's hard to get people from outside. We had many questions about why didn't we look, didn't do different process into our search, but we did look. We looked what was there, and you were the best choice and still are the best choice, and I'm really happy that you're here, and I'm really happy that you're a woman, that you're here. Say that.
I think public leadership right now is really hard. I think it's hard in politics, I think it's hard in education, I think it's hard as it relates to policy. And I think you do a really good job of balancing public perception, personal relationships, and just responsiveness. So, I mean, the things that I write, wrote down that I think are important, that our public knows, is that you go above and beyond in community presence, not only through media but also just through making relationships, keeping people updated, and sharing the story in a positive sort of way without being Pollyanna. You're innovative in your thinking. I've never heard you say anything to the effect of, "We're going to keep doing this because this is what we've always done." And we're willing to push the envelope and think differently and be in the forefront, which I wish our public knew more about because I think it's, from this seat, it's really evident to me. You're fiscally prudent. We hear all sorts of stories, particularly in urban schools, about challenges that are being had, and part of that related to your staff. You've empowered your staff to do really good work, but you also serve as the leader who looks at that carefully and takes responsibility for it in the end. And that prudence is critically important, not just to today but our future positioning. And then finally, I think you're responsive and hopeful, that regardless of the issue at hand or the sort of communication that comes to you, there's a process by which you vet out issues and, again, empower your staff to make decisions, but you also follow up and have an understanding and continue to be hopeful about the direction that we're headed. So I just think the balance is really imperative, and particularly in a world and an era where things are extremely divisive. I think that as a team, we've all done a good job of trying to keep our focus on the students, and that starts with you.
In 1970, Minnesota was number one in the nation in computer science. It is now dead last. You took notice, and you put together a program today on artificial intelligence. You're taking action. It's nice to see a superintendent take action. Good job.
I'll second everything said and reiterate how very few people understand how difficult the job of a superintendent is, and even I learn more and more every day, holy cow, that's a crazy hard job, how do you do it? And you got a good team behind you. Don't be shy asking for help. Hopefully, she's doing that. And like, the hopeful and responsive is very easy to be kind of cynical, especially over the past several years. So that hopefulness is what helps, I think, motivate a lot of people. So thank you for that. That's extra hard work on top of an extraordinarily difficult job.
Yes, thank you for being here. This is a great district, and the more I learn about it and sit here and every day, I'm just amazed with what wonderful things happen in this district. You are a visionary, and today was so impressive, I cried, no surprise there, but just, just your vision to pull that all together and see that need in our ever-changing world. So we're very fortunate to have you. Thank you.
I have to say thank you, and to whomever gave me the tissues, thank you. I was like, my doctor Shannon, don't make me cry. I very much appreciate the words that you shared. And I had told our team when we finished, when we did our last cabinet as cabinet last week, that they, that they make this work, they make this work light, right? It can be very heavy work, but they do, and this board does. I had somebody tell me today, who would know, how very fortunate I am to have a board like you. And the things that I get to do are because you guys let me, right? I could not be out being a visionary or leading outside of this district without your support first and foremost. But you, you get it, right? You see where you want, right? We see where we can be for students, and we all share the same vision and better for every one of our kids. And so you, you support me, right? You lift me up, and so does this team. And without you guys, I could not do it. And so I am super grateful for that. And I also really feel like you guys get me, right, as a leader? And you get, right, that I'm not, right? If you are looking for the kind of leader who is going to keep things status quo, and that's okay, right? There's a lot of great things that I have learned about myself over the last couple of years, like, I'm not your girl, right? I've learned that as a leader. That's not my gift and talent. It is many others, and that's awesome. But you, you let me lead in ways that give me hope because without the belief that we can change and we can make things better, then I can't do this job. And so I appreciate that you see me and that you, you value that, and you let me lead in partnership with you and with this beautiful team. So thank you. Thank you for being my partners in this work.
Oh my gosh. Pulling it back. This is an action item. Thank you, everybody. The correct, Monica, the Board Personnel and Negotiations Committee recommends adoption of the summary evaluation of Superintendent Lori Putnam. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
I have a motion by Monica, a second by Natalie. Zach, can you call vote?
Zach Dorholtz, yes. Shannon Haas.
Yes.
Monica Segura-Swartz.
Yes.
Heather Weems.
Yes.
Scott and Drayson.
Yes.
Natalie Copeland.
Yes.
Elle Dogren.
Yes.
Thank you. Then, very exciting, we have the Minnesota Thought Leaders Summit, Leveraging Generative AI to Improve Learner Outcomes, met today. Very exciting recap here. We're going to have Donna Roper, Executive Director of Research, Enrollment and Assessments, will be joining our superintendent, Dr. Lori Putnam.
Thank you so much, Chair Haas. I'm going to kick it off and then turn it over to this amazing team and ask Donna to introduce our special guest. And I just want to give a little bit of background on the agenda item. We decided a few months ago that we wanted to have conversation around how do we leverage the ever-growing impact of generative AI to change outcomes for students? And we decided that the only way that we are going to make timely change is by bringing together a variety of stakeholders. Typical conferences, learning opportunities have same industry, industry-like conversation, right? Educators go to educator conferences, business goes to business, policymakers do their thing in isolation, and not one of us can do that, can make change, especially rapidly, without honoring that interconnectedness and really using that to make, to discuss, realize, and make change around learner outcomes. So brought together some amazing people, and again, thanks to this board for just being like, yeah, let's do this, this is awesome, and to the team who, this was not me, this was us. And then Charles Fidel, who is, you will hear more about him from Donna, but just an incredibly impressive human who still baffles me, decided to give us your time and attention, and it's incredible. And so really grateful for your presence here tonight, especially, like, amazing that you're in a St. Cloud board meeting. And Donna is, people don't, people I don't think always understand how incredibly well-respected Donna is, not only in the state but across this country in terms of assessment and thought leadership. It is because of Donna who reached out and was like, hey, Charles, hey, Adam Carey, hey, like, all of these amazing people, and they're like, Michael Rodriguez, and they're like, okay, for you, Donna, right? Because you are so, so clearly passionate and incredibly brilliant in this work. And so I turn it over to you guys to give us any input and summary and feedback about the day.
Well, thank you, Superintendent Putnam. That was just too much, too much. And Chair Haas and members of the board and listening community, we had a really good time today at the Minnesota Thought Leaders Summit, the first gathering of this kind of a thing in the state of Minnesota, I think. And I don't want to talk a lot because I think Charles can say, say things so much better than I can, but the idea that we would use generative AI and AI and these new arrival technologies as an instigator to really improve what we teach, what we learn, what we assess, and how we make sure we're giving kids what they need to succeed and thrive in life, in work, in their next steps, was really the core of the work today. It was really to get people kind of leapfrogging ahead of, as Charles says, all of the AI hype. And I think we gotta, we gotta start at it. We're not done. This is just really the beginning, but I think we did get a pretty good start. We had some really great people in the room. I feel like we met our purpose and objectives for the meeting, and of course, we had amazing panelists, we had amazing people willing to come and introduce. We had a student, Jack Oker, who came, it was terrific. Senator Putnam was there, Attorney General Ellison, who, when you think about AI and all of its associations, it almost makes sense that you would have that sort of a person, right? But the keynote, Charles Fidel, was the highlight, and I know this because I have the feedback already on the summit, and it was really, really, really well-received. People felt that they learned a lot. I don't think anyone went away without somehow pinging me or sending me an email saying that was really great. We really learned a lot. So, you know, Charles is, sounds like he's here to commit to partnership with those interested in the state of Minnesota, and we're really, really fortunate. And it really is truly, I think, by happenstance that you agreed to take a chance on us. So, Charles, I'm gonna let you talk about yourself a little bit, explain where you come from, how you came into this, why Minnesota, why us, and what your hopes are.
Sure. So first of all, thank you for having me here, and I too belong to the Lori Putnam Appreciation Society. And the Donna Roper Appreciation Society as well. So, look, I've been in the US for 40 years now. I grew up near St. Cloud in Paris, and that's why I texted my family and I said, oh, you always end up in the strangest places. Well, so, look, the strength of the US and its weakness is its decentralization, strength and weakness. So sometimes the decentralization works to its advantage, sometimes it doesn't. Here, this is an example where it works to its advantage, where you can have a school district saying, you know what, we're taking the bull by the horns, we're organizing something, we're not doing this enough as a state, why not us? And that's the beauty, the American spirit, the frontier spirit of saying, why not us? By the way, you also realize that she came from New England, right? So she's a good export. Just a little word for New England, where I've spent 40 years now. So, yeah, it was a wonderful gathering. So, yeah, it was a wonderful gathering, but the key, the key reason why it felt extremely worthwhile, I mean, I've done work with 30 different countries and institutions all over the world, from, you know, South Africa to South, to Australia to Canada, you name it, 30 countries, and yet, in all these situations, we never had the right mix of people in the room. You typically have the Education Department that wants to talk, or the workforce people who want to talk, or whatever, and they don't talk to each other. So here, a combination of willingness from Lori and Donna and their contacts, and just the happenstance of being married to one of those contacts, you know, everything seemed right. And at first, people were a little hesitant, but it, you know, there's a better-than-average chance of this actually working. Although the state is also large geographically, population-wise, it's five, six million, that's Boston. And so there's a solid chance. Also, you've you've had for decades a history of good education results. You know, top three in the in the nation, et cetera, and that helps, because typically, I don't like to work with the number, work with the number-one jurisdictions anywhere I go, whether it's South Australia or Ontario, I'm sorry, whether it's New South Wales or Ontario, people who are at the top of the game think they cannot learn anymore, you know, they've done it all. Whereas, my analogy is Hearst versus Avis. Avis says, we try harder. So the number-two, number-three try a lot harder than the number-one, and that's why I love working with the number-twos, the number-threes. And there's a really solid chance of something happening. So it was definitely worthwhile, definitely. I hope it will be worthwhile for you, too.
For anyone who wasn't in attendance, just to kind of give you a sense of what we did do, we had three, we did a design thinking session process where we had specific stakeholder groups go through some identification of risks and opportunities. We did an ideation session where we looked at ideas and strategies, and a solutions phase where we asked folks to now identify some ways and some next steps to tackle some of the strategies that you think would work. We're going to have to take some time to review all of that. Our hope is to gather again with the planning team in the middle of the summer. And we we've already had folks commit to some design teams to move the work forward with tentative dates in September, October, you know, January, sort of January, February, and then April, May kind of timelines. I think so often, I have been a part of a lot of these types of things, I was telling Superintendent Putnam, Putnam that, you know, we all want to reimagine education. We've been wanting to reimagine education for a very long time. And fingers crossed, we're going to have some action this time. It's it's not just going to be dropped. So I'm really excited about the day, how it went. I think I think for board members that were there, you can comment from your perspective how you felt things kind of went. But hopefully, we'll get to do it again, and just keep growing and keep improving and keep moving, moving the work. We are entering that, what I called, shared container of the work, where we are getting commitments to moving, moving it forward. And so that's, that's really key.
One key aspect, excuse me, of the design of today was not, as I was saying earlier during the day, it's not a bemoaning session. You know, we've been to so many of these conferences where we say, you know, boo hoo, this is what we have to do, and everyone feels good after a while, and then people leave, people leave and nothing happens. That's not satisfying to me. I've been really pushing to get a jurisdiction to actually move. So I'm very, I'm very happy with that happened today.
Charles, or Donna, would you talk just a little bit about what it is that we want to change out of this, what it is that we're specifically asking for? I think sometimes it can get, because we're using generative AI as a lever, it can get a little confusing.
Exactly. I'm so glad you're asking for that clarification. So typically, when people talk about any new tool, they immediately think of it in terms of use in the classroom, so education technology. But here, we're talking about the impact of a tool on society. So imagine the impact of the car on society. Or if you want to listen to the Prime Minister of Singapore, the impact of air conditioning on his society. Yeah, think about it. Live on the equator, AC really changed the country for him. So technology has a huge impact, it's just that, just the fact that it's used in the classroom doesn't mean that the impact on on society is not a lot bigger than what it actually does in the classroom. It may come up with amazing things in the classroom, but really rethinking the what is more important than rethinking the how. And that's where people get lost. And even on the what, they get lost in the distinction between computer science and AI literacy. So AI literacy is driving the car, computer science is designing the car. Not everybody needs to be a car designer, but everybody needs to be able to drive a car. And, you know, so, and that's, of course, very different from plumbing, meaning access to technology, access to broadband. Again, it's the sort of thing that's thrown in the same bag. By the way, not just here, we're talking about the OECD, you know, the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development, where they too throw all these things in the same document, and people get lost. What's plumbing, what's how, what's what, and at what level of what are we talking about? So here, to clarify, we're talking about changing what students should learn for a future in which will be incredibly driven by AI, like it or not, is as powerful, if not more powerful than the book, or the internet, or fire, or whatever. It's just that the inventions prior didn't have a huge cognitive impact on society. They had the communication impact on society. Sure, you can say, well, the book was also communicating ideas, but it was not directly feeding you ideas in that collaborative sort of way. It was a passive instrument. AI is an active instrument. That's profoundly different. And that's where I think we're going to see a lot of changes. And we don't have to wait for AI to be as smart as a human, as in generalized AI, to start seeing this change. We're going to see it in the two, three, four decades to come. And we have to keep in mind that our kids will see generalized AI, right? And we cannot just wait another 20, 30 years for the barn to be burning, and then, oh, well, let's try to adapt quickly. Adaptation doesn't come quickly, we're a system this complicated. So we need to start thinking now about how do we reshape the what, knowing full well that, of course, the how will be reshaped as well, but really, it's the what that's the big question. What do you teach if you have a constant, really smart companion with all sorts of quirks at your disposal all the time? And so I think, Heather, you brought up the fact that it can't just be, oh, knowledge doesn't matter anymore. Of course it does, and it's what type of knowledge, you and Dr. Allen, I think. So that's, that has to be revisited. Why do we need every single line item that's in the standards that has to be looked at with a magnifying glass nowadays, and not just go and say, well, the Greeks did it, therefore we do it? Not a good answer. Every line item can be justified in isolation, all of them break the bank. All of them mean that there's not enough time for the teachers to cover all this material, because at the higher levels of a of a department, we don't dare make these tough decisions, because there's always someone who's going to be unhappy. If we remove a little bit of trigonometry, ah, why do I use this example all the time? You're going to have the union of architects that's going to scream at you, oh, my gods, you know, the kids are not going to be able to compute arctangent of this, never mind that it's computerized, but whatever. So you're always going to have someone for whom this is the sacred baby you cannot touch. And the complication is to say, okay, fine, if you really think so, that is so important, here's a better way of dealing with it. And it's that sort of creativity that's required when dealing with these subjects. So, whatever. Anything else? Sure.
I'll just add, I think, so it's about modernizing the curriculum in a nutshell, right?
Thank you. Two words rather than my long. Are you? I should have said that.
I like the knowledge of the card.
That was, that was better than modernizing the curriculum.
Thank you.
If it's about modernizing the curriculum, there's about three different companies in the United States that write curriculum in a big way. Are they moving in this direction, or is this something that's only implemented at the state level, like as an addition to or a supplement to standardized curriculum that comes from the companies that write curriculum?
So just so we're on the same page, who do you consider these companies to be?
The publishers.
Pearson, et cetera.
Yeah.
So their followers, they have a financial interest, and they will do whatever they're told. So if the big adoption states say, well, this is what we want in our books, they'll do that, they'll salute and do that. They have zero incentive for being, let's say, a vanguard, that's not going to sell, because the states don't want it. The moment the state starts folding, then they will come in. But the complexity here is that even the states cannot move forward easily because of the university entrance requirements. And the way admissions counselors view their role is to sort, which they have to. If you have 100,000 applicants, you can only select 10,000. What are you supposed to do? But by using antiquated methods of choice, hence the assessment expertise that comes handy, they're using antiquated instruments by looking, for example, at algebra as being a measure of resilience, not mathematics, right? So what if we give them different measures of resilience? I don't know, for me, psychology is just as complicated as algebra, but they don't view it that way. So we need to revamp that part of the system while a state has the courage to do their deep redesign, and then lobby, well, not lobby, actually force the the university system to accept a different type of of criteria for their their sorting mechanism. Basically, we're talking about a better sorting mechanism. Why not value entrepreneurship? Why not value engineering? Why not value social sciences, the way we also value math and science and language and so on? What's wrong with that? Nothing. It's just old habits die hard, and they get enshrined by the SATs. So all this to say, short answer, publishers are followers. Should have started there. But I think you want some editorializing, right?
What type of timeframe do you think that is?
Oh, God. If, I'm really hoping, really hoping, that we can do the deep redesign within five years, and then the deployment in a staggered fashion for the following five to seven years. And by deployment, I mean a lot of professional development, a ton of professional development. I mean, imagine for a second if all of a sudden, in all the high schools in Minnesota, you had to teach, I don't know, just computer science, but let's say biotech. Now what? Who has the labs, who has the equipment, who has the training, who has the whatever? We're talking bio labs, not microbiology, or even worse, you know, just just molecular biology. We're talking about truly the engineering version of the science, right? It's always this engineering version that we're talking about in many cases. What if we have to teach clean tech rather than just physics? In addition to physics, a module on clean tech. In addition to chemistry, a module on nanotech. In addition to theater, a module on improv, right? Not just reciting Shakespeare, whatever, no, but go in improv, be a comedian, do stuff that's tough. That's the sort of thing that's required. So every single discipline has its, has its improvements to make and leave room for modern disciplines. That's tough.
And I'm not trying to dominate this, but at the table that I was at, we talked a lot, I shouldn't say a lot, but we talked about the the way, and I'm not trying to reflect back on the past, is that that has to predict the way that is in the future. But the way that curriculum has been done in this state is it's on a rotational basis, and it gets reviewed about every 10 years. And then, so the state reviews it, and then we, as a district, are on about a three-year cycle per curriculum review. So we'll have a year where we pilot several curriculums, and then we choose, the second year, we choose a curriculum, and the third year, we implement a curriculum. So if you're talking about making major changes to curriculums of all subjects, and including AI in those, and in the, in the curriculum, would that be, so, and you gave me about a 12-year period of time there, you said you'd like to see the standards in place?
Right, but the beginning of the PD is staggered, so we don't wait all five years to start. We can start with some of the disciplines that will be already available by then.
Yeah. Heather?
I think one of the things, and we talked about it at our table today, that comes out of this conversation, is that education and government, I would say healthcare, in some ways, and maybe this is how it's always been, which is one of the things we have to tackle, has been mired in process. And I think that we exist in a world where the processes can't take so long. So I taught, you know, my my knowledge is from higher education, and I look at the processes, and I, I think that institutions get stuck in, whether it's a curriculum process, whether it's a financial process, and the time that is simply laid out. And I've worked at both private and public institutions, and in higher ed, whether you're private or public, it's still, you know, to move the Titanic takes a long time. That said, the private institutions had the flexibility to make decisions and begin implementation in a much faster way. Corporations, we know, make those decisions faster because they have to in order to survive. And I guess one of my observations generally about education is one of the major, I'll call it, impact practices that I think we have to look about, look at, is we're going to have to work with legislature, with our processes in our world, to change how quickly we can move on things. Because, I mean, we laughed a little bit in our group that, you know, he's talking about five years of scheduling. In the world of education, five years is nothing that takes us that long just to have to discuss and rediscuss the same issue. If we don't change fundamentally some of those things, it will be decided for us, and we will always be working to catch up. And I don't know that I know how to do that. I mean, and now I work in the world of NCAA, and trust me, that world's completely crazy. And, you know, we're trying to figure out how to catch up. But part of the problem in the NCAA has been, we waited too long to adapt to society, and now we're throwing out the baby with the bathwater. And I would say, I think we have to be very careful that we don't end up doing the same because we let the process drive, and the timeline, and the approval, and the systems dictate how we move forward, when truly, we have to turn the tables and say, okay, the the outcomes need to drive the process instead of the process driving the outcome.
Jump, jump over here real quick. Thank you.
I just want to throw in that the Read Act, right, is a, is a really incredible example of what can happen when we decide we want it to. And we've got the right people at the table, right? Two years ago, in 2022, were we talking about the science of reading? Not in this state, right? At least, not a lot. In 2023, they decided they were going to make it happen, right, from a legislative state's perspective. So business got behind it. We have, we saw some of the business people there today, right? And when they're behind something, and when then the legislators with the authority, right, say, we're going to make this happen, we're going to assign the funding because the business is back here, and then the unions come along, right? And then, all of a sudden, money comes to us, we get a mandate, and every single district is making that change. And all has to be done within two years. So if we care about it, I firmly believe we can do it. It's just, do we care enough, right?
So to Mr. Dogren's question about the 10-year cycle, it's not only here. I mean, a lot of countries have the same 10-year cycle. That's because since, I don't know, the '70s, perhaps, '60s, That's because since, I don't know, the 70s, perhaps 60s, people have assumed that what we teach has reached its perfection. It doesn't have to change anymore. And every 10-year, we do a small tweak. And oh, by the way, we give you just one year to do all these tweaks. That's what they found, literally. Okay, you have one year to do this. So in one year, all you can do is tweaks. Even if you wanted to do something more ambitious, all you can do is tweaks. And so, you know, over 40, 50 years of that drift, you see the difference between the needs of society and what we teach. And all of a sudden, we wake up and say, whoa, what happened to civic literacy? Whoa, what happened to computer science? Whoa, what happened here and there? And yes, you're absolutely right. If we leave that unchecked, we get further and further behind because there's this huge accumulation of things that should have been dealt with throughout the 50 years. And now they're looking like an enormous thing that we need to do. But it's because we didn't deal with it little by little. So, you know, why didn't we have a huge mess during the year 2000 bug? Because all of us worked on what's called feed forward. In other words, prediction and correction rather than waiting into a problem and then try to correct for the problem. When you see data, sometimes it's too late. And so here, we don't want to have to see the data. We want to pre-correct. And it's really hard for humans to do because, you know, why should I spend all this energy? I don't see a problem yet. Like, no, there is a problem coming. Here's the wave.
Monica?
Thank you for being here. I haven't finished understanding. So you were making an analogy with all the areas of improvement of every single subject. Could you expand on that analogy? I still don't see it. I mean, I see the analogy, but I don't see what the relevance.
I'm sorry, you don't see?
The relevance with the problem. So is that because we're going to be doing that for every? So when we're remodeling or, or, how did you say it? Modernizing our curriculum, does that mean that we are going into those aspects of improvement of every single subject? Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. There are plenty of things that we teach in every discipline that have become obsolete, that are not really necessary anymore, but they're there. It's very much like, I don't know, fat building in your muscles and you don't want to move it out of there. And so that's the situation. We have a lot of extraneous stuff that's there, literally dating back to the Greeks, no joke. And it's there. And no one dares touch it because it's become, you know, sacred. How would you not teach long division? Well, if the head of Mathematica has, doesn't know how to use division by hand and he's the head of the huge software company doing math with the software, perhaps one should ask themselves the question. You see, and everything is full of things like this. Every discipline has its own strange quirks that date back and no one revisits because it's scary and you're always going to get someone unhappy if you touch one thing that they love. That's what we're about.
I would add to that, that I think, just to be fair, because I know how the standards are created by teachers who dedicate a lot of their time voluntarily in many cases. So everyone has good intentions, but we just spent a large amount of time revising math standards. We're currently assessing on standards from 2013. In math, 2014, we now have a new set of revised math standards that were taken through a process, a very intentional, deep, with teachers process. But if you were to take the math standards and look at them, the new ones that they've just released, I bet you could all find something in there that you would wonder, how is this relevant to today's need? Like, that's all we're seeing. So no one necessarily is intending to create this extra stuff, but it's like any negotiation. You're in a room around a table with this many people trying to decide what to leave in, what to leave out. And somebody, you know, invariably really likes this one and, you know, it's more energy than it can, and you're already into 10 years. So it is really, you know, this, today's meeting gave me hope in thinking that we can find additional perspectives to bring to this task that will lend itself to getting us to more efficient bundles of learning that we value because they're necessary. Right? And not even isolated to just one standard, but literally to bring, you know, forward things that are going to make a lot more sense to our teachers, bring so much more clarity to how we provide learning opportunities that might cross discipline. So there's a lot of hope if we can do this correctly with a cross-sector group of the right expertise. And really, it's not fair to ask teachers to write and do all of this stuff. It's very intense.
Okay, so I'm hearing, I need to tell you what I'm hearing and then I'll ask a question. So I'm hearing that we today engaged in a summit that kind of gave a, led a baseline for everybody participating within that summit. I heard that there are participation for different sectors, including education, including education in Minnesota, the executive brand in education. There were teachers, there were people in the industry. And the people in the industry, I believe they were a local or were Portland local? From or across Minnesota. So we have people in the industry. So we have industry sectors, education sectors. We have teachers, unions and our district. And they all engage in this kind of baseline, pre-designed work. And they, I'm hearing that they commit to continue to work on this. And they are going to be, and this selected group of those individuals represented of all those sectors are going to continue to work for this. And I heard something like five years. Is, am I right? Is that what happens today and what is the role of our district? Because it is a very large project and it sounds very cool. But I want to know what is our role and our responsibility.
I think I can talk about our district and then I'll turn over to you folks. And I think the other group that we haven't yet talked about is policymakers. So there were senators, representatives and MDE. I think that was it for like Minskew, MSBA, MAS, right? Like those kinds of organizations are also there. The role of our district, I think, was to get the ball rolling, right? We happen to be the convener of this conversation. And then if others choose to continue to participate in the design committees, then that would be up to each individual. And certainly we can look at what we do, right, here in our district and continue to have these conversations. But in terms of this, moving this, that would be what I believe we committed to was just to convene today. What about you guys, Donna and Charles? Either to, Monica gave us a summary of what she heard. So if you want to respond to that or if you have any other feedback.
Yeah, no, I think at this point, it's more of just committing to partnership, thought partnership mostly. And, you know, partaking in feedback loops together. The big work, the heavy lift is really, unfortunately, really it's MDE that will have the heavy, heavy work on any of this.
Are you still in?
No, but I have a second question. Can I ask it?
Okay.
So Charles, I think that Donna asked you to tell us, who are you and how did you get engaged to this? And I think that you responded to that. Could you tell us a little bit more about you and how did you get to this?
Sure, sure. So, how do I summarize it? So, look, I studied engineering and got an MBA, came to the US, got a job in high tech, spent most of my career developing, working in marketing for microchips first and then joined Cisco, the networking company. Throughout my career, I figured that my purpose in life was much better served with something more interesting than just pushing more bits faster. Because that's what I've done for 30 years, push more bits faster. This is what these things are. So at some point, you're like, okay, that's not a great legacy. What should I do with my life? And I was, I was very deliberate in transitioning from technology to education technology as a bridge to education policy. And so, you know, chance favors the prepared mind. I was in the right meetings at the right time with the right people, gave me opportunities to write a book called 21st Century Skills, became a moniker used worldwide, gave me entries into the OECD, et cetera, et cetera. And after I left Cisco, I was lucky to be, you know, well-paid as a corporate executive and stock options and all that happy stuff. And so I was able to leave Cisco and say, okay, well, what do I do now with the rest of my life that's actually more useful than pushing more bits faster? And here I am. So I enjoy enormously this quote-unquote retirement because this is really what it's, what life is about. It is really leaving, leaving the system better than you found it. What else do we have? There's only so many beaches you can lie on and only so many margaritas you can sip, right? So. No? Better enough?
Yeah, challenged.
But I haven't either. It just bores me to death. Every time I tell my, let's go to Bahamas. In two hours, you'll want to fly back home. So what's the point? Or you'll take your computer. You know, there's just so much happening in the world that deserves attention. I don't know. Beaches can be boring after two hours. You get a soundbite anyway.
Al and then Heather and then Scott.
Yeah, we got a couple of additional things here. It's interesting that you brought up the math standards because I was going to bring them up, but I just kind of thought I probably shouldn't bring that up. But I think the problem with them, the challenge with the math standards that I've seen is that the standards changed, but the way we deliver math education didn't really change and what we deliver didn't really change. They just strengthened the standards and we fail more kids. And somehow they hoped that by changing the standard, by increasing the difficulty of the standard, it was going to pull kids up. And it didn't follow. And I think that would be something that would be more exciting about the implementation of an AI format is that it's changing the way that we teach, hoping that the outcome of the students will improve because of it. And so I think that's a big difference, a big, big difference. I think we did that more in the science of teaching. We said, we're going to change the model on how we teach reading. And hopefully that brings the success level of our students up. And I think that it will. So I think it's, a lot of it is in the approach. But I think math was kind of a complete bone doggo.
You know, one could make the same argument about history, about just about any discipline being not well-taught or not taught well enough.
Yep.
Math is more glaring for all sorts of reasons, was not going to get into. But no matter what, don't assume that AI can do teacher replacement work anytime soon, okay? So you still have, you know, it's worse than that. Why would you use AI to teach the wrong things to begin with? The things that are obsolete. And second, if you have it, you'd better make sure that it's actually not harming the kids because it's cutting back on other things that the kids need to learn, social learning, you know, peer learning, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not just the technology. And I'm not technologist, right? So I'm the one who always keeps telling people, don't count on it to be the silver bullet. Count on it as a wheelbarrow. You would count on, you know, what's a wheelbarrow? What's going to help you carry heavier loads? But it's not doing the work for you. It's making your work easier. So with that in mind, then you can say, okay, how can we use it to teach better? But the road to get there is far more complicated than the AI people will let you believe because we don't have, you know, even if there's a lot of work on learning sciences that has happened in the past 30, 40 years, there's also a lot of stuff that's old and obsolete and that's still being done. For example, learning styles. It's really hard to get that out of people's minds. Learning styles that has been shown to be not true. We don't have a learning style. We have a collection of learning styles depending on the type of subject, the mood we're in, et cetera, et cetera. We may have some dominances here and there, but that changes over time. So there's no such thing as one immutable learning style. Same thing for multiple intelligences. And Howard Gardner is a colleague. You know, we talk constantly and, okay, it was a nice explanation for a world that wanted one, meaning kids are different and people are different learners. But it was a view of the mind. It was not a science experiment that he did. And yet everybody jumped on it and made it cautious. So honestly, we don't fully know how people learn. And how do you code a system if we don't fully know that? So you have to be really, really, really careful there. That's what I'm saying.
Well, I'm hopeful though, I think what I'm saying when I say that the way we teach is, will change is we're approaching it differently.
And that should happen irrespective of AI. That's my point here is that regardless of AI, we need to teach better.
Yep. Okay, second thing that I wanted to, and this is a question for you. If you look forward, say 10, 15 years into the future and you're looking at buildings, classrooms and infrastructure within the buildings, do you see a move such as what we're talking about here requiring any significant changes to a classroom?
Okay. I've had this conversation with school architects a number of times because school architects love to think that, I don't know, all the walls are going to explode and we're going to learn under trees and the trees will be painted beautiful colors and whatever. Now, we're still going to need the building to hide from the elements. We're still going to need classrooms where we aggregate a certain number of students. We're just going to need, you know, the furniture we already have, which is more mobile. You know, look at all these tables and stuff, mobile things and, you know, writing walls and this and that, the other. That's it. It's how you use all of that that's the tricky part. And so don't go and spend oodles of money on, you know, extra technologies like electronic boards that went nowhere. But do spend money on getting a lot of broadband access. So that sort of thing. Yeah. The classrooms are going to be classrooms. It's just that sometimes you're going to have the teacher out front. Sometimes they're going to be in the middle of everybody and that's going to shift all the time. Sometimes you're going to have to go to a dedicated lab because you cannot have the same equipment in all the rooms. But certainly everybody should have their own laptop to be opened wisely when the teacher demands it. Yeah. So good buildings, no leaky ceilings, good enough.
We would plan on fixing those. Okay, so my last one is more of a comment than a question. But after attending the conference today and now listening to you talk here and listening to you talk here and Heather talk here, I'm going to say that I think, I'm hopeful that we put together a really strong summary of what happened at the conference, what the expectations are coming out of the conference and where we see it going forward and send that out to everyone who was there. Because I, this is my take, and I'm not being negative with this, but my take is there was one table that was loaded up with the commissioner of education, all the senators, all of the legislators. The AMSD person was in, I mean, it was like, it was loaded. And every other table didn't have, and Charles, you were in that one. So they had an expert there also.
No, that was by design. I wanted all these.
I understand that. But now I want you to know that there was another 40 tables there that had a bunch of people that have really no idea. They came to learn and get takeaway on what AI can do and where it's going to take us. And there was no one there to really force the discussion in any direction. So we took a bunch of, no, we talked about a lot of stuff. We had really great discussions. We had interesting discussions at the table that I was at. But I don't feel like I really walked away with a sense of takeaway. It was like we just, we rehashed a whole lot of stuff that all of us kind of knew. And this AI discussion was kind of an out there concept. But there was no putting any kind of a where do we take it from here? Type of moment away from the discussions that we had. Now, I'm not saying that didn't happen at your table. And, and I'm not saying that it was the wrong thing to have that happen at that table. Because that table can make some things happen that every, that the other tables can't. But for the couple hundred people that attended that conference to be able to say, okay, these are the things that, that came out of having this conference and this is why to be hopeful for the future and why to be hopeful for where this is going. I think that some, some form of feedback.
We did get some feedback.
We got feedback from the group.
Well, no, we also got satisfaction rating feedback. So if you don't mind, Donna.
So Al, great question. And our plan is to do just that thing, create a really nice summary of the results from the day. And we did do an exit survey asking folks for feedback on what they thought about keynote, the panel, the sessions. What, there was an open ended question. Give us your suggestions on how the host district and/or planning team could do this better. But to your point, I, I saw that too. So I appreciate that you brought that up, that there were many tables who were really having interesting dialogue, but I could hear on occasion that wasn't quite what was the intention, right? Like the same, the conversation we're having here. So, but nonetheless, learning and, and processing some of the artificial intelligence, you know, questions, risks, opportunities, just was a good first start. And obviously we have to go deeper. But definitely we will produce a summary. I can tell you seventy-eight percent of the feedback so far on just the question about overall, did the summit meet the, meet your expectations? People's either agreed or strongly agreed. But I'm sure there will be some additional feedback, you know, that may have a little bit more insight for how we could, could do it a little bit better. So point well taken.
Just a couple of comments. In coming to this, in the summit as a whole, and this is just my experience, when Ryan Cox presented, whenever he presented, like, and that was to this board, I had never stopped to even consider what this looked like. So today to me, the first step and at our table at some point when I was listening, and I missed part of the day because I had to go do my real job. The question was asked, who of one of the, is it Masa, M A S A? Of that woman, who else in Minnesota is having these conversations? So of all the school districts, what they could come up with is St. Cloud, St. Michael, and maybe Eden Prairie. So I think that there, at least in my world, you have to celebrate steps. And the step today was simply to say, this is something that is going to transform the world. And yes, it has to start in education. I think the importance of having legislators there and industry folks there is this isn't just, and that was what was so profound when Ryan was talking, because all of a sudden it hit me and I'm like, holy cow, like this is, this is a new world. There will be pre and post. And I don't even know what that looks like. And to me, it's come up like, we weren't talking, okay, in a funny sort of way. I will go back and say, in, in fourth grade or fifth grade, when I did Future Problem Solvers of America, there was a scenario of which we had to come up with twenty problems and twenty solutions about artificial intelligence that was probably set in 2010. So we're not so far off. But it was so nebulous and so ambiguous. And it still is. But, and maybe I'm going to offer this as maybe an analogy, which is going to sound really stupid, but again, I work in sports and we use analogies from sports all the time. But maybe something that would be helpful. So I work in hockey particularly. For years and years and years and years, one of the standards that hockey teams used was the mile run. Everybody had to run the mile run because that was an indication of something. And because we'd always done it since the Greeks, I guess. And then as we gained more information, we know that the mile run has no relevance to hockey because they don't ever go out and run a mile. Ever. So my point is simply saying, in every subject, this is essentially what teachers have to do. This is my, I have this, my, my son is maybe going to go into medicine. And I said, there's going to be the opportunity with AI where you put in the list of symptoms and the computer can generate how those are interconnected and it can spew out much better than any doctor, the interconnectedness of these random, rare, crazy things that don't seem to be interconnected. Because the database of a computer, you're going to be able to think of five things and it's going to be able to literally think of millions.
Like house.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
House did that.
But what you're going to have to be able to do, because we still understand, and I'm going all over the place with this, we still understand that how you deliver that as a, as a physician matters because people are still people and we're still human. And somehow we have to connect those things. So to me, it's about extracting, it's the extrapolation of why we're teaching something and the skills in every single subject. And then extracting what needs to be taught so that students can perform. So going back to my hockey example, the mile doesn't matter. But being able to do quick movements for thirty seconds or forty-five seconds at a time, we now know that. So what they do in the weight room is completely different. What they do for sprints and for practice is completely different. Whether you're do, talking about philosophy or whether you're talking about chemistry, there's a certain amount of it that you no longer, we don't need to memorize those things. I mean, go back to Ryan Cox's initial thing, when you, once you got a calculator, you didn't have to know how to compute in some way, simple math. But then I think the other piece, and we don't, in higher ed, we, we, to me, don't talk enough about this, what are the high impact practices of how we deliver it? And, and to me, that's where the teaching comes in. And that's going to be the challenge for the teachers is, you know, we may have a curriculum that can be spewed out by AI, you know, in conjunction with lots of conversation. But is, it's then what are the high impact practices that are going, are going to be implemented in classrooms that take this learner and this learner and every learner in between and help them perform? But it can't just be based upon what we taught in Greek learning a thousand years ago.
When we had Ryan talking about AI, he told us an awful lot was how you ask the question, what you ask, what the parameters were. And then he gave us an example of a, write a story about, one page story about a boy, one page story about a girl. And then all the prejudices started showing up because we learned most of this information comes off the internet. And yet the people, a lot of the people today didn't understand that you, that you have parameters of where the information comes from. And terribly simple for you. But there are people that didn't really know that the information came off the internet or how to write parameters so that you could eliminate biases. I know it's very simple, but if you could just hit that a little bit, people would have a better understanding.
Well, so what I was navigating today is the tension between trying to educate people about AI and its capabilities versus its impact on what we need to teach. The goal was really about the impact of what we need to teach, right? And so a lot of these conversations like bias are very similar to the ones we have about equity and funding and things of that nature. They're outside of my domain. So I don't like to bring them up because I don't bring anything to that conversation. There are issues related to, yeah, all, all these issues related to, to ethics of AI and things of that nature. There are plenty of people who talk about that stuff. I don't, I don't think that I add anything to that conversation. So here in particular, we had this opportunity to really talk about moving the system at large, in which of course we will pay attention to ethics, no question. But it was too small of a, I didn't want to do these diversions into these smaller subjects, like for example, the lady asking me about electricity usage, like, okay, yeah, but let's move on. That's not what I'm here.
You've got a point. Try writing social studies curriculum or American politics. You can get really crazy with AI, I would think.
I have these conversations constantly with friends of mine who are very much into this. And, you know, he was just sending me today that he fed AI a bunch of Supreme Court decisions dating back, I don't know how many years. And he was surprised to find out that for, you know, a, a test case he created, it could come up with actually quite well reasoned decision. Like, well, if you feed it good information or reasonable information, I don't know if those decisions are good or not, but reasonable information is going to spit out reasonable information on the other side. It's not, it seems like magic, but it's literally a probability of having one word show up after another word. If I had time, I would have shown you how that takes place. These are concepts that go, go back to in the nineteen forties, if not the eighteen ninety-fives. It's just that, you know, it looks like magic all of a sudden, but this, we've had humanity work on these things for a hundred years to get here. If not longer. So I'd love to do a real geek dive session. Call me anytime for that. Happy to do it.
Thank you.
We will, Katie may have videotaped that, but certainly it exists already online in our professional development platform, so anybody can access at any time, at your own pace, in your own living room. But we will also be revisiting it through the course of the year in our early outs. And then we'll be doing some of it in August as well, as we pick back up with some staff training.
I'm very curious about what you have covered, so.
I also wish I didn't have a real job and could have come today, but I could not get away. All of this just brings me back to my son, who's going to the U of M to study engineering. We went this last week for his freshman orientation. And the assistant dean got up and said, we know all of you. We know all of you probably have a GPA of above four point oh. Some, he said, I don't, I don't know what GPAs, GPAs are anymore because some of you have like four point three, something, something, something. And he said, now throw away everything you've ever done in high school. And look at this slide and it said the percentages for exams for chemistry, first year chemistry, first year, you know, a couple of other classes. And chemistry was fifty-five percent and engineering was sixty-five, this one part of engineering was sixty-five percent. They said, you are not going to get a hundred percent on any of this stuff. And if you are, we're actually failing you because we're trying to see what you know, not what you have already mastered. And you could kind of feel the balloon deflate in all of these kids because it's like they're used to being the top of the top of the top of their class. And he was saying, that's great. And now don't just imagine that your class is the U of M engineering, you know, CSE class of twenty twenty, whatever. He put up the top ten universities. He's like, these are your peers, the people who are engineering at, at MIT and at this and this. And it was all kind of fun and games until he came up and talked. And then they were like, oh, okay. But that's the kind of, like, that switch is a lot to think about my eighteen year old doing. He'll do it. You know, he's a smart guy and he's resilient. But that switch without the social science behind it, to actually have that resilience, if you've been the top of the top and haven't really been challenged as much as you need to be, which he has been in some of his top classes here. But that's where my, my thinking goes is, yes, we can write a new curriculum, but how are we teaching kids to handle huge jumps like that in their life is, is kind of where mine goes with it.
Resilience is built, is built one step at a time, right? Throughout K-12, it doesn't, it doesn't have to happen, you know, in one big sudden shock. If it has been, if the kid has been scaffolded, he's had to prevail over various difficulties. Well, they learned that, okay, well, this is a bigger step than usual, but it's not a killer step. And you can absolutely write that into curricula. You know, all of these parameters we're talking about on, on the competencies such as critical thinking, curiosity, ethics, et cetera. You can actually codify that in the way it's actually taught in the classroom, not just inert words in a, in a PDF, right? In a curriculum document. No, you can actually make it into lesson plans explicitly. And that's how you build them. And sometimes you're going to need different experiences than the ones that a typical classroom gives you. So particularly when it comes to courage and resilience, you're going to have to have often physical activities. And if you want really jarring ones, try sailing on the lake with not so great weather. If you survive that, go sail on the ocean when you have tides to boot. That sailing, for example, is a very tough discipline from our standpoint. Everything is constantly changing. Better be courageous, better be resilient. And that's just one aspect. Speaking in public could be very courageous for some people. Improv really pushes you, et cetera, et cetera. So there are multiple ways to, to get there and you have to exercise multiple ways because that's no single way that's going to constitute transfer from one situation to another to another. So all this to say, it's perfectly doable if it's architected well in the design of the standards.
That's why teachers are magic. To me, anyway.
Yeah, they are. They are, no question. But we're asking them to be beyond magic. I mean, we're asking for Elastigirl and, you know, superheroes that don't exist. It's not possible for any human to bring all these parameters together in a cohesive, cohesive ensemble in fifteen, in fifty minutes. You just can't do that. You have to have something that has been prepared by a bunch of experts, including help from technology, to show you how it's done. And then you can tweak it, yes. But to come up with that design solo, that's not ever going to happen. It doesn't happen worldwide, not just here. So that's why the, the impact of technology is going to be on pushing us forward. But the pushing us forward means a huge step for the teachers to climb and we have to minimize it by giving them all the help they need. I really mean it. The tools, the PD. Sure.
So thank you, Natalie, for bringing that up. As you were talking and as we were discussing, I, I got very excited about the conversation that was happening there. And I was very sorry that didn't get to be. But I, I am hoping, and I'm looking for the, for, for the summary, but I'm hoping that you did talk about the how and the what is what we need to be teaching. Those social skills that become kids resilient, not only improvise, improvising in theater, but also being in a group of theater, solving a problem together where you have to get to it together, together. How, how students will need to be together to be, to be, to be creative. And the ability to create that they will get, like what are the tools for continue to be creating and designing? I have somebody that told me that we're not going to need architects anymore. I, I would love to, to hear your, your response to that. I'm, I'm not sure. Somebody wanted to go into architecture and they were saying, no, that is AI now. And they were going to need architects. And I'm still thinking about that. And I still want to know if it's true or not, but if it's, education is going to move forward and teaching something archaic, well, maybe, maybe that's right. So looking for the critical thinking and also looking for more on those bootcamps or workshops than where people can ease into, into this. Because I can imagine if I am a teacher, and I'm not, but, but I'm, I can imagine a teacher thinking. I can imagine, if I am a teacher, and I'm not, but I can imagine a teacher thinking, "Now I have to learn all this, and it's going to be a new thing." AI, different than computers, is easier. Computers have mechanical issues that was costly to learn for some people. My man comes to them and do double-click. In AI, you talk to the device, and once you train it so that thing understands your accent, then you're good, pretty much, can understand you better than others. So I will appreciate those more of those easy into what it is. And also into the, I guess, part of the conversation had to have been about what is the information that AI gets from, like, it just, it's not like everything is connected in the world, though it is, but it's not like AI is getting information from everywhere, you were saying. If you feed him good information, it's going to get you a good result because it's processing that. That's something that probably our students need to learn. And then we don't have the conversation more about is ChatGPT helping you to do your tests and kind of cheating your way through, and it is more about what is the tool that this is. So I hope that those were the conversations that you were having, and I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, Monica, there were a lot of people there interested in those similar topics, and we did capture much of that in the design sessions. And there is a group of folks committed to a design team to, like, work on those sort of immediate AI literacy issues. So, but I also want to say, you know, if you wanted to see the keynote, it's recorded, right, Lori? We'd be able to share that, too. So I think that would, you might like that.
And we can send you the link once it's all done. We recorded the entire morning, so Charles' keynote and then the panel, which address some of the short-term concerns, right, that you've articulated. So once that is done, we'll, it'll live on the Google site that Donna made for the summit, and then we'll also, I'll gladly share that out with this team once it's ready.
Okay. Thank you very much, Charles, for spending this very long day with us, your time, your knowledge, your skills.
You're most welcome.
We really appreciate it. So it was a great day, and a long day, but it was a great day. So, thank you.
You're most welcome. Thank you.
Well, okay. Thank you. You know, it wouldn't be a board meeting. We're not going to let Mike get out of here without one more here. Just one policy tonight. We have the second reading for proposed revised Board Policy 521, which is Student Disability Nondiscrimination, presented by Dr. Mike Revard, Assistant Superintendent of E-12 Education Services. And I believe that's the last time I'm ever going to say that, so.
Good evening, Chair Haas, Dr. Putnam, and members of the board. This Board Policy 521 is up on the board. Any, can we be done with that? No, I'll do it like I usually do. I'm sorry. So Board Policy 521 is on student disability and this nondiscrimination. It's a policy that we reviewed back in January of 2021. At this time, we are not making recommendations for significant changes of this policy. What we are recommending, though, and it's a policy that's directly related to children and students who are utilizing protections under Section 504 of the REAP Act of 1973, so our children who are on Section 504 accommodations. But the main change to this, as a reminder from last board meeting, is that previously, right now, it lives in our board policies, having the procedures included. At this time, the Board Development Committee is making a recommendation to pull those grievances, or excuse me, to pull the procedures off. So, any questions this evening?
Al?
We're recommending that you pull them off, the Procedures Manual, just so people don't think that we're pulling them off.
Appreciate that clarification, Al. That is accurate. Other questions or comments?
All right. Thank you. Then we're moving on to reports. Up is the Superintendent's Report. Lori, Dr. Lori Putnam.
Thank you, Chair Haas. This evening, my Superintendent's Report was largely the conversation around our Minnesota Thought Leader Summer. So thank you all for participating in that. You made my job easy tonight. And then the last portion of it is to honor and say farewell to our beloved Dr. Mike Revard. Mike spent, people here likely know, but Mike has been in this district for decades, though he looks on a day over 25, so I don't know how you do it. He has served in a variety of roles, including social worker, Special Ed Supervisor, Principal and AP at Oak Hill, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary, and Assistant Superintendent for E-12 Education. So you can hear from that vast experience that he has, he is well-prepared to be heading off to be our good neighbor with general ed and special education expertise, and a great deal of knowledge, some hard-earned and wisdom that he has gathered here. And so I will save my remarks for last to Dr. Revard, but I wanted to honor his long service to our school district and then turn it over to Chair Haas.
And then probably pass those Kleenexes over here. This, it's been wonderful. So I just wanted to open up to board members to say their last board meeting farewells to you. I know you're not too far, so that makes it a little easier. Who, anybody would like to start?
Yeah, congratulations, Mike. It's not, you're not leaving on bad terms, and you're going up in stature to a superintendent. So there's a lot of good that's happening with this one here, and you're not going too far. You don't have to relocate your family, which is also a plus. Can be a real hard, it can be a real hard decision when you have to transfer halfway across the state or something like that and pick up all new with your family, but you don't have to do that here. I'm sure that we'll hear plenty about what you're doing over there. And I've, just since you've been selected as the new superintendent there, I've heard real positive things from community members and some of your old parents from Oak Hill, just talking about how fair you are, how caring, easy to work with, easy to talk to, and all of those things, which is going to carry along with you up to Sartell. I'm sure you'll carry it out in much the same manner. And again, congratulations on the advancement, and I hope everything goes great for you.
I feel kind of about you currently, as I feel about my kids going to college. Like, okay, fine, but I don't really approve of any of this, but I guess this is the way things go in life. I just really have learned a lot from you in, similar to Lori's leadership, really like calm but strong, decisive, but also willing to listen. And so, again, it's that living in both worlds, but having this, you have a really strong moral compass that I've noticed about you, and also a really desire to listen, but you already, you also know where you're wanting to bring the conversation and not in like a manipulative way. Like, you've really thought things through before you sit down to do something even as boring as policies. You make un-understandable things very understandable, such as policies as well. But I just really, like Al said, your caring heart is really going to go a long way across the river. They're very lucky to have you, and I really appreciate everything you've done here.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for all your work that you have done in the district. Thank you for being the person that you are and being the example, giving the example that you're giving us and giving the students also, and everybody working with you. I completely agree with what has been said already. I will miss you a whole deal. I'm going to miss my partner here next to me, and that's going to be sad. I'm going to start crying. I miss the caring that you put in everything that you do. I will never forget your presentations of elementary school kids and the way that you talk about them and the way that you were carefully curating every picture that you got to give us the message and to get my awe and everything that you got at that moment. That was, that was something that one cannot do without heart, and I love that you are bringing that heart into the work that you're doing.
I'll start it a little bit the way I started with Lori. I think leadership is difficult, and I think that any leader right now, and Charles mentioned it today, it comes up often, I think everyone is looking for courageous leaders, people who have, you know, that moral compass, but can deliver it in a way that is solid and strong, but also influential, and not necessarily based solely in power. And I think that that's where you have the opportunity. And probably the last thing I will say, and I think courageous leaders also have the ability to build what, you know, you would call an elephant skin without forgetting that you still have to hear the parts that are hard. And I think sometimes when you build the elephant skin too thick, or when you stop listening, you lose the opportunity to make a difference. And so, everything that I've seen in your work style and in your approach to education and your caring concern for students says that while it won't be easy and while you will face your certain level of challenge, you've been developed in a, by multiple people to understand how that works. And I just encourage you to maintain that courageousness and that perspective. And you can't control much beyond that, but you can control the team around you and how they, how you have the impact. So, good luck. Congratulations.
I didn't know what a policy was until I met you. And boy, have you really been teaching me a lot. You really know your stuff, and I appreciate that. And you had such a nice summer for me to read here in the board meeting. Well done. You'll go a long way up at Sartell. Good luck.
Yep, definitely will be missed, and I hope. And it sounds like people feel like they're lucky to have you over there. I hope they recognize that going into the future, because, as we said before, it's a tough job. Sometimes it can be tougher, depending where you land, while they found the right person for the job, so.
Will be missed.
And this is hard for me, because I consider Mike a very dear friend. We started together at South a long time ago, and for a long time, Mike was my travel companion whenever we would go on conferences each year. And he took, he got me to go parasailing. And fortunately, I didn't know how dangerous it was until after. You know, sometimes he does lead me astray, but very rarely, only when we're in Miami. But I am, I am going to miss you dearly. It is, it is, it feels to me like that we are, we are true partners, and I appreciate knowing that I can count on you in thick and thin. And so I'm glad that you're not going too far. You will make those 4:45 a.m. calls much nicer when weather, when weather hits, and hopefully that won't be the only time that we stay connected. The impact that you've made here has been profound, and the impact that you've made on me as a leader and as a person is also really deep, and I appreciate it. And so, thank you.
Thanks. We'll celebrate with some cake for our meeting. Then we have the Board of Education Standing Committee reports. I believe we just have one, Board Finance Audit Committee presenting, Chair Al Dalrymple.
Yep. Board Finance Committee met on June 11th. We had two items on the agenda that day. The first one was the Apollo referendum discussion. David Leopold and Whitney Lowheed from JLG answered questions that the committee members had after the presentation from the last finance committee regarding plans for a possible future referendum. Discussion included possible locations for the required storm shelter and how to update and refresh the space capsule. The plan is to give a presentation to the full school board in September, and it was a much deeper conversation than just those two items. We had all kinds of different places. We talked about every little nook and cranny of the building, and some of them were really deep conversations and some of them weren't, but we, it was a lot more broad than just those two items. And then the other item that we had on the agenda was the fiscal year '26 Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Plan. And we, Amy presented that tonight, so I won't go into that in any further detail.
Thank you. Then we have future agenda items. July regular board meeting topics will include the activities update in Minnesota State High School League While We Play video, approval of the 2425 Minnesota State High School League membership renewal, approval of the 2425 Minnesota School Boards Association membership renewal, approval of the 2425 Association of Metropolitan School District membership renewal, and approval of the 2425 Health and Dental Insurance Plan renewals and premiums. At this time, does any board member wish to suggest a future agenda item? That's a good question. Just once, July 17th. Back to Wednesdays. Okay, that's everything on the agenda. Looking for a motion to adjourn tonight's board meeting? Do I have a second? I have a motion by Natalie, a second by Zach. All in favor, say aye. Opposed. Meeting is adjourned 8:30, 8 p.m. Have a good night. Thanks for watching.